All right, we are opening the business meeting for the zoning board of appeals Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. Okay, let's start this off. You want to give us some?
Yeah, and the finance?
Finance, yes, thank you.
The first sheet is the expense line item. We've used, so we have our 806. So we've used, there's the total for supplies, total for phone so far. So, we're not using this anymore, except for to pay for the phone bills. Because this was for phone, postage, and supplies. The postage is the next page, and that shows you what we have left. And we have enough in there till the next fiscal year, which is July 1. And then you have to keep a $50 balance to keep it open. So we might want to put a little bit of that 860 that we get again on July 1 in the postage meter. Because we've been busy with, you know, the, when I do the butters list, certified mails are six and change now.
Mm-hmm.
And I have to send one to the owner, owners, applicants. And then the rest gets regular mail. So right now, the expense, if you notice, the phone bills come all at once. You get three, like, all at once. They come in late. And you'll see now, it says long distance. They haven't been charging us for long distance, and I saw Mary, the town accountant, and she says that's going to stop coming in now, the little, like, 79 cents. But you see there, they're revolving. We did not receive an invoice yet for the laptop and the, it's coming in on June 11th, so it'll be sometime after that. So on the second page, you see a fee's to date 4-3-5-0.
Mm-hmm.
So that includes $450 for Georgetown Plaza for next month, and the amount we spent to date. So when you add the laptop in there, there'll be another 1,200 taken out of that. Well, it didn't come to that, it was 1-888-87 was the, and that might be modified because the time it takes him to set it up, they gave me the quote for two hours.
Right.
Kind of. I don't think it would take two hours, so it might only be $90, so that might change. It'll be less than what we, we put not to exceed. The new business is the minutes. Is, the business minutes, all you, we'll all vote, and the other one, Sharon, accused herself. So I just need motions to go.
I'd like to make a motion and approve the business minutes, the business meeting minutes of 5-6, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Business I can do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, and I'd like to make a motion and approve the hearing minutes of 5-6, 2014 for 60 and 64 through 74 East Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Under correspondence, we have the denial for the next hearing. So Georgetown Plaza is now just asking for what they already have there. They have a, they have a 15, it's like they have a 1,500 gallon tank.
1,500 gallons a day?
Gallons, yeah, gallon, gallons per day. But it still exceeds the 110 gallons per day per 10,000 square feet. So they were supposed to get a water resource years ago, and for whatever reason, whatever inspector, building inspector was here way back when, never had them come for it, maybe it wasn't in the bylaw yet. So they're not adding to the septic, they're keeping, they're just keeping the status quo. Oh, this is basically a water resource permit for what they already had, that they should have gotten years ago.
Hmm.
So they dropped everything else.
No way of finding out how that, how that, again, how that happened? They just, they never even applied for a permit, or they, did they apply for a?
I don't think, I think they changed the water resource location. I think they used to fall outside of it, and now they're within it.
That's true. It completely was 165.
If I'm remembering correctly.
And I think that some things, I mean, I remember there was a supermarket there, someone telling me, so we didn't have, I don't think we even had it in here.
I think the buffer zone changed for the brook, and that's what caused them to be out of compliance.
Wetlands change all the time, flood latins change all the time, they get bigger.
So, and that's, that's why they're out of compliance, though, as, as far as I'm remembering.
This next one is a denial for 118 Jewett Street. I have an appointment with the applicant, actually it's under James Tolman, with Mark Tolman, for this property, for, he's coming in Thursday. I'm back in the office Thursday. This is a industrial B-zone, and single-family homes are prohibited or excluded. So this is a use variance. I did explain to him the high threshold. He wants to go ahead with it.
What does he want to do?
He wants to put a-
Oh, construct a single-family residence, oh.
Right, and it's in, it's right in the industrial, when you look on the map, it's industrial zone.
I feel like there's, I feel like that's already happening. I don't know about 118, but there's something on, is it Jewett? It's Jewett.
I don't know.
Where there looks like it's, it might just be an office, but it looks like a home.
I don't know. If it's allowed in that area, because there might be some res-
It might be an office space.
It's probably, a quarter across the street from this is probably residential, across the street.
This isn't probably the same location.
And this is, yeah, but this will be a definite use variance.
Jewett, that first road, coming off at 95?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Right near, it's right near a business, and it looks like a single-family house. Beautiful, it's beautiful.
Well, Jewett, Jewett starts on North Street and ends where it turns into, you know, remember where it turns to Jackman, and then bangs a hard right again?
On the left if you're coming from West Main.
I would, I would get a pictometry picture for you, but we lost it.
I think it is Tenny.
You know where I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think it's Tenny.
I, we don't have access to pictometry anymore. For some reason, Merrimack Valley, because we didn't buy new, you know, microphone's about to fall, Gina. Because we didn't buy the new flyovers, they're not allowing us to look at it.
Is there a way to be able to get that?
Like, we can't even look at the old, the 2012 pictures that we paid for.
Can't we just buy a whole bunch of software to do that, and training and everything?
It's under the thing of the planning board, and the planning board decided to hold off on it.
So we already bought the material, now we can't build?
Because I would go into what's called, what's called MyMap, on, online, it's MyMap, Merrimack Valley, it's a GIS, and then in the bottom, you're able to go to pictometry online and hit, go to pictometry, and now it's gone, it's just gone, I lost. I think I did, wait a minute, you know what, I think I did, I think I have a picture of this, I think I printed it out right before it went.
Okay.
So I'll email that out.
How much would that cost?
It's like $4,000.
What's wrong with Google Earth?
I just got a quote from one of my suppliers that they will, if I tell them, yeah, I'm going to do a roof over on, wherever, right?
13 Middle?
For 20 bucks, okay, they'll go up to 20 square. They'll take a picture of it, and tell me exactly what I need to order.
Really?
20 bucks.
Wow.
Harvey, Harvey's doing that. I don't buy shingles from them because of bandits, but I'll spend the 20 bucks so I don't have to do the installation.
Um, the last thing, I just, I just put in there under correspondence is, because we were talking about in the office, what you need to have in minutes. For example, why I've been giving Paul, like, a list of the plans that are submitted, they have to be marked, have to be marked into the record now, and it's just a reminder of what needs to be in the minutes. Documents and other exhibits, they need not be verbatim. And, I mean, are you guys good with me doing summarizing? Because I know, I'd like to talk to Jeff, see if Jeff's okay too, because sometimes when I summarize, it's a little bit harder to understand, and word for word can-
You gotta summarize, you can't, you can't do verbatim.
Yeah, if I look at that DVD, I can be on there for six hours.
Way too much. Not even important, not even essential, though, I don't think.
Okay. That's it.
Okay.
And we have a new application there for next month, I put it under your agenda for Duncan, except for Sharon. So if you want to make a motion to close, if you're ready.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
The business meeting is closed.
Well, stay on, you want to stay on?
Uh, sure, yeah, because it's 7:30.
Just staying, no?
Oh, it's all right, whatever. Okay, we are, yes.
We have letters, do we need to read those in?
It's up to you, but yeah, I'm clear.
Well, let me open the hearing here first, and then we can, then we'll go through correspondence, whatever. We've got stuff from the fire chief, chief of police, that sort of thing, is that what you're referring to?
Just that, Mark McDonough and Thomas Walsh.
Yep, yep. We are now opening the, the hearing for 17-19 West Main Street. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. The meeting is being tape recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. The, the board members today are, present at this hearing are Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, Dave Kaptanis, and myself, Paul Shillen, and Patty Pateri is our clerk for this meeting. Dave, can I get you to read this legal notice for me?
Sure can.
Thank you, sir.
Legal notice, Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals, 1719 West Main Street. A public hearing will be held on June 3, 2014, at 7:30 PM in the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor, for petition application that has been filed by the owner, Thomas Walsh, Georgetown Grill, Inc., LLC, 18A Bartley Street, Wakefield, Mass., there on A-33. Applicant petitioner, Serenity Restaurant Group, 185 Main Street, Los Angeles, for the property located at 1719 West Main Street, located on the Georgetown Assessors Map, 11A Lot 28. The property will require a finding by the ZBA that the alterations are not more detrimental than the existing conditions, as the property is in CA Zone and is required to be 15,000 square feet of area and have a minimum of 50-foot frontage. The property is non-conforming in both area and frontage. Further, the applicant petitioner would require a variance or special permit for three signs on the new facade of the building where one is allowed, per Georgetown zoning bylaw, Chapter 165, 9, 65, 78, 79, and 84, and MGL 48, 9, and 10. ZBA File 14-11.
Thank you. Before you, the applicants present, why don't we read the two letters, letting us know who the applicants are and who they're representing?
Okay, the first one is from Mark McDonough of the Serenity Restaurant Group, addressed to Patty Pateri, dated April 29, 2014. Dear Ms. Pateri, I am writing this letter to attest that I am appointing the architect of the project, Richard Griffin, to represent me as applicant for a request for signage, variance, and special permit before the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals. Sincerely, Mark McDonough, owner of the Serenity Restaurant Group.
And then the second letter is from Mr. Thomas Walsh, addressed to Ms. Patty Pateri, dated April 23, 2014. Dear Ms. Pateri, I'm writing this letter to grant my permission to, how do you say that?
Serenity.
Serenity Restaurant Group, to proceed with their proposed improvements to the existing restaurant on my property at 17-19 West Main Street in Georgetown, Massachusetts. I have reviewed these improvements with the architect of the project, Richard Griffin, and appoint Mr. Griffin to represent me as owner for their request for signage variance and special permit for the zoning board of appeals. Sincerely, Thomas P. Walsh.
Thank you. And just before you guys start, we're missing one board member, so that'll require unanimous vote on this, for whether it be a special permit, a variance, I'm not sure about findings, but I don't, do we need a majority vote for a unanimous vote?
Finding is a simple majority, so it would be three.
Simple majority. So, for the finding, it would be simple majority, and then for the variance or special permit, however we determine it, it will be a unanimous vote. So you have the ability, at, at some point, we can continue it to get, well, we could, yeah, Jeff could read, read into it.
We can do a mullin rule for one meeting, missed meeting?
Yep, yep.
If it's continued.
Right, if it, we could probably vote to continue it if you felt the need to do that.
And if it was to be continued, it would be the second hearing for next month, in July.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead.
All right. Well, let me introduce myself and, and Mark McDonough. Mark McDonough was introduced by letter. He authorized me as an applicant, but he's here in person, so. Mark is the owner of Serenity Restaurant Group, which owns a number of restaurants on the North Shore, and his and his, his business partner, Jeff Callas, latest venture is into this, into Georgetown, and we're very excited about it. In any case, they're really just, as the notice in the paper said, the legal notice said, there are two reasons that we are presenting before you tonight. One is to, is for a special permit to alter the facade of the building, and we understood this from the building inspector, who advised us that even though we're grandfathered within the space, any alteration, even though it's within the setbacks and, and in conformance with the height regulations, that we would be required to get a special permit, since the lot was smaller than required and had somewhat less frontage than required. What we would like to do is, is give a little bit more presence to the building and, and make a statement that's within the, the context of Georgetown architecture. It's a clapboarded building, and it has closer to a two-story effect, which many buildings in Georgetown do, and at the same time, I think it, it says, says a restaurant, restaurant slash tavern slash bar fairly clearly by its architecture, which I think is, is appropriate, but at the same time, fun and interesting for downtown Georgetown. And so, on that basis, we feel it's within the context of, of the surrounding architecture. It doesn't create a greater detriment to the neighborhood, in fact, we hope it does just the reverse, and, and on that basis, we hope you'll approve the special permit. The second part of our request is for a signage variance. Our main sign is, is the sign that says the spot. On, on either side of the sign is our lettering that says bar and restaurant. I think our principal contention is that the bar and restaurant signs are not advertising so, so much as they're part of the architecture, and that the signs, all, all of the lettering is going to do, be done in brushed aluminum. I think it's an attractive, simple, straightforward lettering. It's not lit from within, there are, are gooseneck lights above it, which will, I think, give a softer light, and so we feel that the, the signage is integral to the look of the building, and that it is not overly heavy advertising in that respect. And that, plus, plus the fact that the, the bar and restaurant signs are informed of advertising our, our.
Quick question, the easement discussion, have you had that discussion with anyone else so far, as far as the, the overhang of the?
Yes, I presented this project to the Board of Selectmen, Stu, was it about a month and a half ago or so, roughly?
Yeah, month, month and a half.
A month, a month ago, and they determined that it would require the approval of a, a special motion at a town meeting. I gather the town meeting isn't until the beginning of September.
That would be a special town meeting, if we have one. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
And of course, we'd love to have it for the summer, but I guess that's, that's the best we can do, so. But we feel that, that there is presently, I should make, make the note that there, there is presently, or was until today, a two-foot-six overhang on the building, and-
That was going to be my question, it was two foot six?
Yes, it was exactly the same size overhang that we're looking, only we're putting up something much lighter. We're, we're putting a small metal awning up that is, will be securely anchored to the building, and I think will, you know, of course, it's, it's designed in, in the context of the facade, and, and we're hoping that the town can find a way to, to construct a, an allowance for the awning.
So the awning is also 2.6?
Yes, no, two, two foot six, two foot six inches.
Sorry, right, it's the same.
I think it's labeled on the drawing.
It's no different.
Yeah, it's no different.
It's not on the existing drawings, the width? We're trying to figure it out.
I'm sorry, I did measure it, and, yeah, it is, it is the same as the existing.
And the height of the existing awning is four foot three and a half?
Yeah.
And your new awning is one foot 10, correct?
Correct, yes.
Is that a permanent awning, or is that?
Yes, it would be a permanent awning, it would be a metal, standing seam metal awning.
Okay. And can you tell me what it, it was 4.6?
It was four foot three and a half prior.
So you're actually reducing, you're actually reducing the size of it?
That's correct.
Okay. And actually, it's higher.
I'm a little confused about, with the overall application, and the fact that we're reducing a non-conformity? Does it need a variance if it's reducing? Legally, I can't answer that question, I wish there was an attorney here, because I'm, I'm just not sure.
Well, there's no variance for the awning required.
Right, the awning is just a point of discussion.
The awning is being an easement, which we can't approve.
But we can approve the, we can approve the engineering and the design with a condition that it needs to be approved at town meeting.
And that's, that's kind of my question.
Yeah, we could-
Do any conditions you want, including that.
But I don't understand, though, is if it pre-existed, why does it suddenly have to go to the town?
That's my question.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, I was gonna, exactly, I was gonna introduce you, come on up, tell us.
I'm the Board of Selectmen, and a recent, recent appointee of chair, so.
Yeah.
Thank you all for serving, by the way, and, and all that you do. We had this, we had the same questions, and we had discussed it, and what we talked about was, a variance would, would be something that's going to obviously run with the property forever, and we all discussed it as a board and voted on it, and actually, I don't think we took an official vote that night, but we discussed it, and just kind of the three selectmen that were there- And just kind of the three selectmen that were there felt that a variance wasn't really the right way to go. Because it is, it is existing, it's previously nonconforming, and this actually goes higher and reduces the footprint. It's not permanent like it is currently right now. So if we had, we had the highway surveyor here because we were concerned about any site work on the sidewalks or anything like that, you know, equipment clearing it, things like that. And this is actually bolted in, so it could be removed.
Correct.
So it's, it's more of a temporary basis. So we just thought overall, one, it would be better because it could be removed if there were any issues. We definitely didn't like the idea of variance because that would, that would go with the property forever. And then we also, um, had, um, building inspector here. And a lot of the, the awnings and everything that already exist don't have any variance. They don't, there's, there's, there's no record of any variance on any of those buildings. So we just felt that, um, you know, we're, I'm here just to say we're fully in support of it from the Board of Selectmen. And we just thought it would be, um, really not necessary for the actual, you know, special permit, I'm sorry, not the variance, but the special permit.
But does it really need an easement?
Does it need to, does it need an easement if you're reducing?
It would not need an easement.
That's grandfathered.
That, as I understand, but I'm not the lawyer, but from what I understood in our discussions.
I think John would be able to answer that question.
Yeah, easement, well, see, John brought it because it was kind of silent in, in the bylaw, apparently, on, on, on that topic. So it already exists now and it's actually lower and it's permanent. So we felt that we wouldn't really have to go easement because it's actually gonna be nonpermanent. It'll be higher and, um.
But still within compliance of the forty foot commercial.
But within compliance of existing usage.
So we could.
So we felt that you would have the power to be able to do it and, and make a, make a decision on it and a pretty clear decision on it.
So we wouldn't need to condition an easement?
No, and, and the Board of Selectmen was not supportive of an easement.
Okay.
And, and partially because none of the other buildings in the, in, in the downtown area there had any easements from what building inspector could come up with.
No, when you start looking, there's quite a few that already have awnings, whether they're permanent.
Right, right, exactly. And so we just felt that, you know, we really wouldn't have to go that route and it probably didn't make sense too. So thought it would be at the will and pleasure of the board to be able to, you know, make that decision.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
That's perfect.
Okay.
On that, on that point, then, it was the planning board that instructed you to go to the, to a special town meeting?
No.
For that easement?
No, the.
No.
No, they would have to if it was, if an easement would have to go.
If it was determined an easement was necessary, all right.
Yeah, correct, it would have, all right, a special town.
Now, are we allowed to make an, I mean, we can, we're not requested to make anything, a finding or anything. We can only sort of give an opinion, I think.
I think we can approve the design.
Yeah.
As, as part of a special permit because we're approving the design of, of an existing nonconforming structure. If it requires an easement, that's really not our purview. So we can just exclude the whole easement conversation in our.
The fact that it's been preexisting for over ten years, okay? The easement is already grandfathered. And they're also reducing a nonconformity.
And it's higher as well, so.
But the height isn't the issue, it's the projection out over the sidewalk. That's the issue. And it's actually being slightly reduced. And I don't understand why someone told you you need to get an easement, is what I'm saying. I'm, you know, I'm not an attorney.
That's by the book.
Yeah.
As, as new construction, but we're not, if this was new construction, you would, right.
But it's not.
It's not.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
You may.
Justin Jones, in the fourth paragraph of the building inspector's denial. The proposal will also trigger the requirement for site plan review under section one sixty five eighty three B of the Georgetown bylaw. This section requires planning board's site review for exterior alterations. So they are gonna have to go to site plan review after acts, so.
I thought that was if it was an easement.
So I am understanding it too, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm not sure if he's talking about the awning. But he, he clearly says exterior alterations. He's not specific in which the alterations meaning the variance for the signs or maybe he means everything. I think he, I'm, I'm not sure. It's just the paragraph under where he explains the awning. So a condition would definitely be that they need to go to the site plan approval.
If required.
If.
Can someone, Sharon, do you, are you looking that up right now? One sixty five dash eighty three B?
Yes, I have it.
Yeah, it's huge.
What is it, what is it, is it specifically about easements or what is it?
Hmm, no.
It's just about all the various alterations that they're making to the building? In the meantime, I'm gonna read a couple correspondence that came through, if that's okay, guys?
Yeah.
Uh, we, this is from Chief Albert Beardsley regarding seventeen nineteen West Main Street with regards to the plans and drawings presented by the, to the fire department for review. After careful review of the proposed plans for this location, we find that the parapet, the parapet wall and steel truss frame metal awning, to be of concern, the fire department will need to, need a better understanding of how both of these areas will be secured. This is due to a, this is due to parapet wall and the awning being directly above the path of fire crews that could be entering and exiting the structure. In time of fire involvement, these areas can become very unstable and collapse without warning. I appreciate any additional details that could be provided to the fire department. Otherwise, there does not appear to be any new changes to existing floor plan or structure. The second correspondence is from, uh, Donald Cudmore, Chief Cudmore. I have reviewed the attached plans and have no concerns from the police departments or public safety perspective. Thank you.
In my view of sixty five eighty three, this does not meet the criteria of requiring, the criteria of requiring a site plan approval. Do you read it that way? I'm, I'm looking at specifically B, items one and two, then C. I don't think it falls under there. Projects requiring site plan approval except is otherwise exempted in accordance with subsection C, no building permit for the construction. Exterior alteration, relocation, occupancy, or change in use shall be permitted and nor, or existing uses shall be established or expanded. And off-street parking, I don't think they're doing any of these.
They're doing an exterior alteration.
It's an exterior alteration, that's what he says in the denial.
Yeah.
For exterior alteration.
Fine, then, we don't have an issue with that. If, if it's had to do with the easement thing, then that'll be a whole separate thing. But just on the, the exterior alterations, that's perfectly fine for them to go see them.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's fine. We don't have to really deal with that.
Okay.
Could I speak briefly to the fire chief's concerns?
Oh, please, yes, that'd be great.
What, what we've done is designed a, a system for the, the parapet so that it's integral with the roof. And we've hired an, a, a truss engineer to essentially wed the, the two structures together with a sloped, um, supporting wall, supporting roof that is supported by trusses. So essentially, that, that parapet will be securely locked into, um, the, um, the roof and it will be, um, more secure, I would say, than, than what's there now. And it will fully conform with the Massachusetts State Building Code in terms of, of wind resistance and so forth. So, um, we'll, we'll have a certified engineered, uh, drawing that will submit with, with the, the, the plans for the, uh, structure to the building.
Well, I think that would, if, if we satisfy building.
Yeah.
That should satisfy fire.
And, and the same's true with the, the awning. It will be fastened directly into the studs, you know, at, uh, at every, every truss point and leg bolted in, so.
The awning is aluminum?
It's aluminum, yeah. So it's going to be a light awning. It's, it's, it's not going to be really even as, as, as anywhere near as heavy and pendulous as the, what, what had been there. So I'm confident that the engineering will be adequate and we'll have that substantiated by the building department's review.
Any comments from the, from the board? I, I guess we'll do these one at a time. We've discussed the, the, uh, the easement and the awning issue. We'll come back to that sort of at the end of the here and here.
Talk about the signs?
Well, yeah, or so we could do, go backwards or we could get back to just, do we, do we believe that, uh, that any of these, any of these alterations are more detrimental to the existing conditions that we have, that we've had there for many years? I mean, uh.
Um, what color is, is the clobbered's gonna be?
It's going to be a coastal fog. Brought some color trips along.
Ish, right, grayish?
Yeah. Here, I can pass these around. It's sort of a greenish gray.
Okay.
Do you have renderings with the color on them?
Uh, we, we, just very rough renderings. I thought it was just more clear to bring the chips that would actually show them.
So most, so the trim will all be the red and then, okay.
That's correct, yeah.
And the sign for the spot?
The sign, that will be in actually brushed aluminum lettering, and I have a picture of that too. Lettering for a randomized brushed, brushed aluminum, so that's basically their, their half inch, half inch thick brushed aluminum letters.
Do you have a little more cotton? I need one for the minute.
Can I leave this with you? I can, I can email you a copy, is that okay?
Yeah, color, yeah. But everything has to be marked into the record and then it gets attached to the minutes and it has to be decided if needed.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm a little bit, I'm just looking at the picture.
Yes.
The picture looks like the background's light and the spot is dark, but is it, it's inverse, it's more like this, the black?
It's inverse, it's more like that, yes. Our, uh, our graphics person had, had sent us the spot and hadn't translated it across. And he said, it, it will all be brushed, brushed aluminum.
Okay.
And we provided the graphics for the, the bar and restaurant, so.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanna know what I'm looking at, proving.
Sure, sure.
Dave, I think, uh, because we're gonna determine whether this is not more detrimental, no more detrimental than the existing conditions, I think if you want to talk about signage, I think you should do that. 'Cause I, I don't know whether you have any intentions of changing anything or, or you like it the way it is, but I think it's sort of a continuing conversation of the same thing, like what is the big picture here? It's pretty much what we're dealing with.
Did we have, um, existing square footage of signing versus proposed?
Yes, we did send in Patty to you and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have ever.
The one I, the one underneath you, right there, is the existing that you didn't file with the original application.
Right, right.
That's the existing blade.
At center.
Existing blade was about thirteen feet, I think twenty-six square feet. And then there's a, a sign on the side that is.
That's three oh by three six?
Yeah.
That's the one there too.
Right.
And I guess we're questioning whether or not the restaurant bar sign.
So do you count both sides of the, because it is on, it's both sides?
It is double sided, right, the blade sign.
I think so.
Is it seventy-eight total?
No, I think it was, yeah, I think it was twenty-six, twenty-six for both sides, thirteen feet a side. And then.
Oh, 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 and then another thirteen feet for the one on the side?
It was three, four, but I think it was a little, a little bit more, around fourteen feet on the side.
Need a calculator. Okay.
Put it on my phone.
Just roughly, that's fine.
Yeah.
And so.
So it's about, yeah, it seems like it was forty feet total of signage, forty square feet of signage. And we have a page donated to the new signs. And, um, and here, here we have this, this barn board frame. And I guess that would, would be considered all signed, so we're really, you know, si, oh, it says underneath sixty-five square feet for sign area, area on the spot. The restaurant, uh, sign is forty-two square feet and the sign area of bars twenty-six square feet. So that gives us sixty-five and forty-two.
You've got total signage, one thirty-three.
Yeah.
So it is increasing.
Yes, it is increasing.
Oh, you're on the wrong page. Eighty-three.
Done again.
Eighty-three.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty-three square feet is what we're asking for.
But he's measuring this. Do you wanna measure the lettering?
I would, because it's, the siding matches. Like the siding carries through in other parts of the building.
I think for the restaurant and the bar, you can, you could.
Probably cut that in more than half.
Yeah, it would just be seven, eight, call it eight square feet for the bar. And thirteen square feet for the restaurant.
I see, okay.
I mean.
Well, it, right, it's, because you carried that same sort of, well.
'Cause it's all the same color, right?
Right, yes, yeah.
So it doesn't matter that you switched. I think it's just the, 'cause that's what we looked at with Keon's, right? I'm just trying to remember what we actually, it wasn't the square, it was.
Right, yeah. And I'm wondering if we're gonna, uh.
I mean, the spot is, it works the same way. We're, we're just floating that, you know.
That one's hard to determine.
But it is hard to determine, yeah, I mean, we could, could say that it's twenty-four square feet, yeah.
Well, I'm, basically, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just thinking, you could say it's roughly three feet by eight feet of, of sign, of signage, you know, that it's roughly twenty-four square feet. And that would be ju, you know, kind of covering all.
Does confuse it a little bit.
Yeah, it does.
So forty-five square feet, kind of.
Everything stayed horizontal, it would be less.
But that's, that's assuming that, that we.
We're trying to get to square.
Because it is actually part of the building.
Yes, yeah.
But all that assumes that we don't consider that the bar and the restaurant signage isn't sort of part of the architecture, right?
This is assuming we're, the, this question, why we're doing this is we're assuming it's, it's signage. But you're right, is it more architectural?
Which I think is a valid question that we should take into.
I, I'd, I would like to know the opinion of the board on that. That's a very, uh, it's like old timey, you know? And the only, and again, our, our job as, as a board is to, to whatever we decide, we can decide whatever we want. We just need, need to be able to defend it in the, in the next case.
Well, is it more detrimental? That's the question. I think that's what it really comes down to. They have existing signage that was already above what was allowed. And so now, is this more detrimental than the existing signage was, right?
Yes, and it, and it's, and then it, it comes into that whole thing of is existing, uh, nonconforming signage is the way in which the, if they increase the, the non-existing, if they increase the, the nonconformity, are they, are they extending the type of nonconformity? They're not. It's just, they're just, you know, that, that's that whole nonconformity issue we, we deal with.
Yeah, I'm trying to find that, um.
And where do we draw the line?
Because I don't, I don't think it's a variance.
Part of the architecture.
I know.
Oh, well, it's integrated, 'cause I don't have a very good picture. I like what I see, don't get me wrong, but like, I don't have enough.
A rendering would have been awesome. Um, just because it gives you more the real flavor of what it's gonna look like.
You're talking about color rendering?
Yeah, just, I mean, I have a pretty good idea. So I, I do feel like with the spot, if the back of the spot is black, that makes the full square footage of that become a sign, 'cause that's black.
Okay, yeah, can I see that? Do we have, still have that sample?
Yeah.
I'd like to know, I'd like to follow your train of thought on that.
This, this is what you're looking for.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Is that an example of the writing, the brushed, brushed aluminum too?
That's the brushed aluminum. I think, you know, in reality, the, uh.
You gotta match those.
I see what you're saying, that, that really is.
So that becomes a sign. If this is blending in.
That's part of the architecture.
That's part of the architecture. You have to match those in.
I would tend to agree with that.
Is this the same one you showed me before?
Yes.
Looks more yellow.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
Nice.
This is the exterior, like that one, that's interior.
Look more yellow.
Yeah, you're right.
I've got a good eye.
Good eye.
So there's.
I wasn't trying to torture you.
Oh, the lettering, no, the, the lettering is gonna be brushed aluminum.
It's, it's brushed aluminum, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is that, and then this is gonna be, this brushed aluminum, sorry, this brushed aluminum, aluminum. This is that, and then this is gonna be, this brushed aluminum, sorry, this brushed aluminum, aluminum on this. So it, it blends.
Oh, so it's this?
It's the brushed aluminum.
On top of that?
And then the sign, for, I mean, for my interpretation, I'm gonna call that the sign, whether these other ones are signs are fine. The spot sign is actually gonna look like the sign, because it's gonna be different than the rest of the front.
Is it brushed aluminum on that green background?
No, it'll be black on the back and brushed aluminum, correct?
No, there won't be any black.
Oh, what color is the back?
The brown, that will be whatever the bar, that will either be that color. I'd like to reserve the, the option to have that the same as the trim color, because it would stand in better relief to the aluminum, but...
Well, and that's what, I thought you said it was black like this, I'm sorry.
It wouldn't be black, no. It would be one of the paint colors, yes. It could be that and it could be the...
So brushed aluminum is just the words, the spot?
Right.
To me, then this is the architecture, right? That's what you're saying?
No, this is the signage, so...
This is the, that's the trim color.
Trim color of the sign.
And, and we're going to have vertical siding behind the signage, the aluminum. And that vertical siding may be painted that color in your right hand, but we're considering the, the red as well, because the aluminum might just fade into that, that color too much.
And this is, this is why this is very critical to what I'm trying to figure out right here, because if you're putting bar and restaurant on this, it's, it blends, like you said, it's pretty subtle, you'll still be able to read it. If you're putting the spot on this, that makes it the sign, you know what I mean? If you're putting the spot on this, then it's kind of all the same.
Blending, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I, I just think that if you're putting it on this, we need to know that now, I guess, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to put pressure on you if you haven't determined that yet, but...
No, that needs to be, that needs to be in there. You, you gotta present, what you, what they approve is what's here.
Sure, yeah, well, we hadn't, we hadn't suggested colors until today, but...
How close are you to determining whether this is the color?
Well, we're, we're, we're very close. You and, and Jeff approved those colors today, but...
So I'd be good with this being behind the spot, your color there. And this, the blending thing, be for bar and restaurant, because again, you see, these are done as much for blocking out the space as saying the letters.
Because if it was empty, it would just be empty.
It's just a way to make it pretty by saying bar and restaurant to have a purpose for taking up that space.
Chewing up to the eyes.
Right.
Are there names on those colors? Because I need to put something in there.
You could even cut your piece.
Baked clay is the trim.
Okay.
And can I say the, behind the spot?
And behind the spot, and behind the spot.
Okay.
Okay, we should call it the body of the sign.
The body of the sign.
Behind the spot warding.
Right.
Okay, and the other...
And then the other one is, oh, and it's Benjamin Moore, coastal fog.
Coastal fog, yeah.
Both classic.
We're making this decision right this second.
Oh, would you rather change it?
As I'm looking at this, a subtle, if this, if this color and that color is exactly the same, I don't think it'd look very good. I think if it was just a, just a shade darker than that, that was in the same family, but a little shade darker, that's a prettier building.
Yeah.
Is that the color you're thinking of the shade darker?
What happens to be right here, what do you think? It's an interior, see, these are our interior colors.
What is that, black now?
No.
So it's not quite a shade darker?
Yeah, the building's black now.
It's black now.
Put it in the notes, we'll, you know.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say, yeah, a shade darker would be nicer.
Can we have them come back and just confirm the colors? Put that as a condition that colors need to be confirmed?
Color rendering for, for the decision.
Well, I was thinking of when you did the Georgetown steeple, the slate, part of it was when the, the color was determined, they just needed to come back quickly to a regular meeting and say, hey, these are the colors, are these approved?
Without opening up a hearing, it...
No, a business meeting.
Paint this the same color and later paint over it?
I think the way we did that was it was based upon the approval of the, of the historical. Well, the historical commission, that's right. And then, and then if the historical commission confirmed that, well, if they agreed with the color of the...
Else you get over there.
Nothing that...
Nothing's quite great.
Anything look appealing to you? It doesn't to me.
Could we, could we submit a, a tone darker for the background to the bar and the restaurant sections? You know, could you make your approval, an approval conditional upon our submission of a color within the next week? And, I mean, we could probably do it in the next few days and...
I will have it tomorrow.
Yeah.
I don't know how that...
Yeah, we, we're only here once, once a week.
No, I don't think, we would never...
Not part of the record right now.
Okay, then can we say a, a tone darker in the same family?
Because it'll be, how does this work? Nine seventy-six be...
Can you look up Benjamin Moore colors on your laptop and look at...
You have a wifi connection?
Yeah, it should come right up. Coastal dry, coastal fog, nine seventy-six.
Coastal fog.
You need the one that has the three different colors.
I mean, maybe I'm just...
Amanda on the phone?
I'm not comfortable with, with making these decisions at, like during, you know, this needs to be continued and with a colored rendering of exactly what you're doing.
That's why when I, you know, I said we gotta have anything.
Right, well, we weren't prepared, I guess we, we, this was sort of the last, to, to bring colors, we didn't think that the decision would be contingent upon a color scheme.
We really look at the aesthetic to determine whether it's detrimental, because if you can...
Had to be a certain color, blue with the white background. Dunkin' Donuts is very specific, they're putting a new pylon sign. We had a color rendering.
For example, we could approve this and you could make this bright pink and lime green.
That's right.
And then...
Right, right.
And then, I'm not happy.
I'm just trying to figure out a way for the restaurant to open with a finished, you know...
If you can determine a color, I mean, I'm, how do you guys feel if they're to determine a color within the next...
What's that?
Because we have all the colors here minus...
It didn't just come up?
No, your computer has it already set.
And if they can tell us what it's gonna be.
You want to hold on a second? And he can't get it, but I can, can I look up Benjamin Moore colors?
You get paint samples, okay, you know, there's four, okay.
Do you want the rendering for the decision?
Can you get it?
I don't so.
Trying to, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I mean, it's gotta be within the same color.
Right, and it'd be the one that's just a darker, a slight...
If I can get on.
What we're, right, we, we know that the spot itself is going to be a sign, including the, the body of the sign. That is the main sign. The other two signs, we've determined that they're not essentially signage, they're more like...
Well, they're, they could be, depending on what color. If this was the color, I feel like you could say it's signage.
Hey, you want to come over here?
That is pending upon approval to be submitted, as far as to get the ball rolling.
Can you just, because I can't type, sorry, right here?
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
So I'm getting here, did I know the color palette you're looking at?
Now, search, yeah, search just coastal, what is it called, coastal?
Coastal fog?
Search coastal fog, similar colors.
And then find... So, okay, so...
Patty, may I take, may we take a brief recess while we gather some information?
Yeah.
Chris, could you, what?
Chris, can we take a five-minute recess, please?
Brandon or Brendan?
Ian.
Okay, we are live again, folks. We took a brief recess to determine what the actual colors might, well, what, yes, what colors are, will be used on the facade of this building and what have we determined, folks? The body of the sign?
Of the spot sign is the baked clay.
Right, and then with the brushed aluminum, are they raised letters?
Yes, they're raised letters, half-inch aluminum letters.
Barely, okay. And then the bar and restaurant ornamentation, we'll call it. The background on that, those are, that's the Brandon?
Beige.
Brandon beige?
Yes.
And again, with the brushed aluminum?
With the brushed aluminum plate.
And the actual walls are going to be...
Coastal fog.
Coastal fog and the trim back to...
The trim, columns, base and...
You're still using coastal fog?
The, the, the body of the building.
The whole, all the siding.
Okay.
The exterior siding.
Exterior siding, okay.
The columns and the trims are the baked clay. What's the community table inside?
Yes, yes. I, is anyone able to tell me what, if the restaurant and bar were not considering that to be signage, then, then I would imagine you're significantly less in square footage than the previous set of signs?
Well, if you call it sixty-five square feet, it's still more, right?
It's a little bit more.
Slightly more than the combined of all the other ones?
Because we're considering the background of, of the...
What is it?
Line red, although that's a color of the rest of the building. I mean, that's a color that is, that it makes...
I think it's an existing non-conformity. I don't, I think we're splitting hairs over how many square feet.
We're not increasing the non-conformity, only with, it's not, there's more non-conformity, but it's of the same nature. And is it more detrimental? And that is clearly not the case.
Where's my special? And I think we need to add a bylaw as an aside for the signage.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the existing, they had the chalkboard signs.
Yep.
So would that be counted as existing signage in order to, and if we add in that, the chalkboards, which I don't have a scale on, but I, I'm, I'm looking at this saying, you know, we're right about, we're right about the same and with the chalkboards, it could be just a little bit, little bit less and...
I feel like the chalkboards are the similar type of, of use as bar and restaurant.
Well, also, they, they have a menu, they're gonna have a menu board here.
Right, and that's really not a signage.
Temporary signage. Should we count the restaurant for sale sign? I, I, I think we're splitting hairs personally. I don't, I...
I would agree.
I think the overall, the, the overall project is definitely much better than it's ever been that I can remember. And I don't really see us getting out of whack with the, what the, as I was calling that, sort of a non-sign, I mean, like you said, everyone knows it's a bar and a restaurant, that's just really a point of interest. Yes, Sharon?
Well, if, I mean, if the, the little, I feel a little awkward that they were pushed into choosing a color on site. But that said, if it blends with the building, I agree, it's part of it. If it, if it really stands out, it's signage, so I'm okay with it. If, if the background of the bar and restaurant is with true, true blending, slightly shade, but not drastic,
Right.
then I'm, I don't think it's signage. I understand your point of, of, of making use of that architectural space, so it's just not blank.
Right.
And I think really, I feel like that's really what they're doing.
It looks better that way.
And truthfully, yeah, if there was nothing there, it would look bizarre.
So as long as it's not a real stark contrast, I'm just, I'm just worried about picking a color off a phone. But it looks okay.
You got, they were, they chose to do it, Sharon.
You know those Benjamin Moore cards you get with six colors?
Yeah, I couldn't quite figure it out.
It probably made your life much easier by having to do it right now.
And this is the second car, you know, the next color, one or two up the card.
I just feel like we pushed you. But if you're okay, we're, I'm okay.
I don't think it's gonna make or break it anyways.
Then I'm, I'm really okay. I feel fine with it.
And this is, and obviously, what, what we're doing is we're, we're looking at existing non-conforming structure and the way it currently looks. And the only reason we care about the colors and everything is we want the town's people to know what they're getting, what we're voting on and what we're accepting. And I think beyond that, I don't even know that there's any way that we can control what color they painted after they painted the first time.
My, my only point being is if it's a stark contrast... My, my only point being is if it's a stark contrast, it's a sign to me.
Oh, it's, we agree.
Right. No, and I, I agree.
If it's a shade, I don't feel like it's more part of the architecture, that's my only point, what color you choose, I, I, it's not my business.
Right.
Well, it is.
But if it's black, it's a sign.
Mm-hmm, sure. Right.
It is your business.
It's dark brown, it's a sign, yeah.
That's what you're determining.
So, okay, that's my only point, which I took too long to say.
No, no, it's great.
Sounds like a Supreme Court argument about I know it when I see it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Judge Potter, that was his name. Excuse me?
Do we go through?
Uh, well, yeah.
I'm gonna add those to the plans you have to mark, I'm gonna add those two colors.
We have exhibits.
Yeah, you're gonna mark all those exhibits.
Are these ours?
They're yours.
Eighty-two, eighty-two, eighty-three.
Uh, so, okay, can you write down those three?
But you're gonna get me that other color.
I'm going to get you all three of them.
These three, get added down here, we've got these two sheets today.
Yeah, let's. Cause it hasn't.
So then it'll be exhibit four we start with.
Well, um.
Okay.
Well, I was gonna do A, B, C.
I'm going to take, I better take those.
D, E, you know, so whatever you wanna.
Why'd you have Duncan do that?
He doesn't have a copy here to just copy the back.
Well, she's got, these are exhibits, exhibit one, exhibit two, exhibit three.
Oh, okay, oh, great.
Yeah, that's another thing.
She took.
No way to run a railroad.
Time that they're already marked.
Well, some of them are mine.
G one?
So can I call this one exhibit?
She's just gonna mark them in exhibits, so that's gonna be, um.
Exhibit four, is that right?
Oh, no, I didn't put numbers on them yet.
You've got exhibits, oh, E X two is just the sheet, it's the same, sorry.
No, that's just the sheets, these are, these are the sheets, so just put either A, B, C, go down the list, and we'll add that.
Is that?
On this list?
Sign, sign wording rendering?
Um, the spot, um, lettering.
I'm putting down on the here the spot lettering and then the two colors.
Right.
And then he's gonna bring in.
He's gonna bring in the.
Well, you, do you have coastal fog there? I thought I read Brendan.
Oh, and coastal fog. Fog is the, on the clapboard?
On the clapboards, and the trim is the.
So do you.
Plot plan, A.
Is the clay, what is that?
Yeah, I will.
Brandon?
Can you give us the number on the back of the clay?
O thirty-five.
O thirty-one.
Put the number on the back.
And nine seventy-six for coastal fog.
Okay, now I have all the numbers.
Well, do you wanna cut a slice?
Yeah, so we can cut a slice off, cut it off.
I don't have scissors.
I can fold it when we turn it.
They have scissors in the back room?
Where's G two?
I'll just fold it and cut it.
Sure.
Two is in the main part of the application.
Fold it and bend it, and fold it and bend it, and fold it and bend it.
So are you doing A, B, C?
They could give Patty a, a tear also.
Oh, if you wanna keep your stuff that has the wording on it.
How many tears do I need to just?
No, just, just get one for us and then give them back the originals. Cause they've got their information on them.
And then maybe for the building.
First one is a finding, the second one's a motion, and then, so this is, this is a, right.
So, not so good on that one.
Let me know when you're done marking.
A three, G.
Can I give you a piece of these, Patty?
I, I have hers.
Oh, we, we've got them.
We're all set.
Okay, but I was just wondering, she needs one.
These, the, yes.
Oh, they are for her.
Yes. We don't keep anything.
Wonderful.
She's the keeper. You see, it's we're like a band of misfits.
E X three.
I'm not sure.
Can you tell me what you marked?
I'm writing it down.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, hold on. J, J. Right, you want me to write them down for you, right?
I need you to say them out loud.
Well, I'm gonna candy the sheet here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then we've got.
Then we'll say them all aloud.
K, L.
K. L. M.
Um, one of those is color.
This is K. Sign samples, color sign, no, uh.
Rendering, or, I don't know.
Sign rendering?
I guess. Color selection for the next.
And then, uh.
Baked clay.
Paint chip.
L. Is, uh, the spot body. Sign body.
Is that right? The baked clay is the spot sign body?
Is the spot sign body, yes.
Okay.
And then M. Is the building body.
Correct.
Okay.
Siding.
Clapboards, you could say.
Building.
And then N is to be submitted, and that's Brandon beige.
Of course. I spell color C O L O U R.
That's fine, it's Brit.
Couleur. Are you doing your hair?
All right, uh, and then N?
Will be Brendan, Brandon, is it Brendan or Brandon?
Brendan, Br- uh.
Brandon beige?
Brandon.
Brendan beige.
And that's the, um, bar and restaurant body.
Two B's.
C C five thirty.
All right. Yeah, so the first thing we're doing is the actual, um.
This one's a. Can we do?
Those are just the sections.
They're all of it together, well, cause the variance goes away.
So just, yeah.
So we can do all the other stuff together.
Um, well.
Yeah, the board, the board, this is the finding that that's not needed.
Okay.
Oh, for, for both the alterations and for the signage?
For the variance. No, we, we need to make a, a finding that a variance isn't required for the existing signage.
Do you have those marked?
Oh, these guys, what do you want?
So we have to say that it's, um, it's an existing nonconformity.
No, no, letters that paint.
What, this here?
So we don't think it's a variance because it's not.
No, it's not.
You marked, um, all the exhibits. And it is no more detrimental.
I don't know what you did with them.
Hey, I don't have the exhibits, Paul.
Oh, what, excuse me?
I don't have the exhibits. I don't know what numbers, there we go.
Did he give you all the paint colors too?
Well, let's, uh, I think we can make a, we can make a finding, first of all, let's do one thing at a time here. Make a finding that, as mentioned in John's denial, that, uh, the proposed alterations are not more detrimental to the existing conditions. Right, so we can get the, the alterations to the building itself, which is basically re-siding, things like that. And, and actually, in, in a way, it's including the, uh, it's including all the design aspects of that. These alterations, do we, do we, we can make a finding that we don't find them to be detrimental, uh, more detrimental than the existing conditions. So there's number one. And then number two is gonna be the signage.
Waiting for Patty to shoot me a look.
What?
Not even, okay, I'm just trying to get these, okay.
Okay, keep going.
And then number two is basically going to be.
We missed one. We need to make a finding that the, a variance isn't required.
I missed the first one, did you write that down?
Correct.
That the design elements are not more detrimental than the existing. Okay.
Because, all right.
It's an existing nonconformity. Does this have to be part of the motion?
Yeah, of course, well, we just gotta write all this stuff down first, absolutely, yeah.
It takes us a little while.
Yeah, well, I, definitely patient, otherwise we'll continue until next month, and then they'll really.
And then we bring in our ringer.
No, I take, it's, yeah, it just has to be written in the right way.
Understood.
So item one.
The guy who's not here is the one who can like bang out a motion in seconds.
What happened to that slacker, where you go?
He's away for work.
China? It's in China, is it? Probably.
He's actually in, like, Ohio.
Oh.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Hey!
I think he'd rather be here.
Are you from Ohio?
I have been.
Oh, dear.
Is not required as the signage is an existing nonconformity, and is also no more detrimental.
Excuse me.
Current signage is existing and non-conforming, right?
Yeah.
Give him a rip.
Oh, sure, I shall, that's great.
And new signage. I'd like to mention, determined to be the, the actual, we don't need to mention the other two signs, but the, the, the new signage, we're, we're determining that the new signage is.
Is it conforming then?
I don't know if it would be.
Cause if we're just saying the spot is the signage, then it's just, it has to be fifteen percent or less of the frontage.
It is less than fifteen percent.
So then, the new signage. The new signage is conforming.
And if you wanna mention it, you can say that the bar restaurant is part of.
An architectural feature.
Part of the integ- integral part, building architecture design.
Would it be wise to mention that's in part due to the color selections? I mean, part of that decision is based on the colors they're choosing, right?
Right, but if they paint it in ten years.
They can read the minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
I think it'll be fine.
Okay.
What is it, bar and restaurant?
Okay.
Mm-hmm, the bar and restaurant portions are considered an integral architectural design feature.
We just changed that.
No, I agree.
Okay.
But that's why we made them pick it, okay, got it, I'm so afraid about it, no, it's okay, we're clean, I can't look.
All right, Patty, we're gonna kinda do this, you wanna?
You can't.
All right, um.
If light straight was still there, we could go up.
Yeah, that's right.
I can't make a motion.
No.
No.
Why don't you gotta come on?
So you wanna make a motion?
Well, that's why I'm saying we need to write it out, I can't make a motion from a trans.
You can, from this, you can, absolutely, well, here, sir, yeah. I'm kidding, here. Let's, uh, uh, the first thing we're gonna do, uh, you're gonna make a motion.
Do we make a motion to have a finding, or do we just find?
We like to ma- uh.
Uh, hold on.
No, you make a motion to find.
Okay.
So you'd like to make a motion to find that the zoning board of appeals.
Motion to find.
Yep. Proposed alterations.
To find that be proposed.
At seventeen dash nineteen West Main Street.
West Main?
Mm-hmm. Are not more detrimental than the existing conditions. And then the second one, uh, you'd like to make a motion to find.
Can we do, can we motion all of them at the same time, or do they all have to be individual votes?
No, you can do it all in one.
Furthermore.
To move. That.
Uh, we find that the variance, the variance is not required.
That a variance. Required for signage.
Uh, because current signage is existing and not, non-conforming, well, you, no, I'm sorry, the current signage is non-conforming.
It's, it's not, it's existing, existing signage.
Existing, okay.
Cause current could be, existing signage is non-conforming.
And new signage.
Non-conforming.
Is conforming.
Wait, I would like, also like to move that a variance is not required for signage as existing. Is non-conforming, period, the new signage. The proposed signage.
Yep.
The signage is conforming.
Um.
Um.
Arch, the architectural features.
As, I'm just gonna put the bar and restaurant.
Okay. Mm-hmm, regardless of calling them architectural features, like, I, for lack of a better.
Right, but I was gonna say that the bar and restaurant are architectural features and are not considered.
Hmm.
Right.
Signage by this board.
Right, yep.
Is conforming, as the bar and restaurant, verbiage? Not call it signage?
Hmm.
Say again?
Yep, say again.
What do we wanna call that?
I'm calling them architectural features.
But I'm gonna determine that they're architectural features, so I can't say the architectural.
Okay. Verbiage?
What are you, what are you saying?
Uh, I just said simply architectural features, quote unquote, bar and restaurant are not considered signage by this board.
Oh, okay. I like that.
So. Second. Out.
Do we even need to say that the existing signage is non-conforming, cause the new signage is.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't think you do.
No, cause the, it's just.
No, you don't, right, no, you're right.
Do I have to say anything about the awnings? No.
We're not there yet, I would also like to move that a variance is not required for signage as the proposed signage is conforming.
Well.
Oh, we're not there yet. Is conforming.
The architectural features, bar and restaurant are not considered signage by this board, and therefore. Do I need to write in therefore, just leave it?
No, no, because it's, it's just not, you don't measure that s- face feet.
Alright. Well, that's why I say, and that's why, I was gonna say, and therefore, the square footage is not included in the calculation.
You could, if you wanna get real specific.
Would be clarif-.
I'm gonna write it, I think Jeff would.
Good for clarity.
Know that.
Could I help the next decision, please?
Could.
In the calculation. Considered. Are not considered. Signage. calculation. Okay.
Uh, you know what, let's, 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 uh, let's jump back to these proposals, we'll require, go back to your first section there. Zoning Board of Appeals, that the proposed alterations, and I would write in there, including the awning. And so we're determining.
Instead of doing the awning separate, that's a good idea, well.
Yeah, that's, cause we believe that the design is the, right the way it is, so then, as defined by that, we're saying that these are not, so the board, our board is finding that not to be.
Okay.
Okay.
More detrimental.
So we don't need to do the awning separate, we can just include our.
No, cause we're not even supposed to, we can mention it in our own findings, but.
But do we need to say that it is a pre-existing condition that is being actually reduced?
Reduced.
Actually, yeah, because it's not a finding that's the special permit, or no?
Because I've been through this. If, you know what I mean, the fact that it's being reduced.
No, no, it's just, uh.
Mm-hmm.
No, it doesn't, we don't need to, because what we're saying is, uh, given the fact it's existing non-conforming, uh, the proposal will require a fine, blah, 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 appeals that the proposed alterations are not more detrimental than the existing conditions. So, yeah, you don't even need to say that it's reduced or not, it just, these, because the, the point is, is that people are saying that they need some sort of special town meeting because there's an easement issue, but we're suggesting that.
So we don't even need a special permit, it's all finding.
Well, it's actually, it's actually grandfathered in because it's pre-existing for over ten years.
That's what I.
Yep.
Hmm.
We need a special permit for the signage.
Need a special permit.
No, we.
When you're, you're saying it's not gonna be a variance, then it's a special permit.
Is it a special permit if it's conforming?
But they're not, they don't even need. They don't even need anything because their signs are conforming, their sign is conforming.
Is it less than fifteen perc- or is it fifteen percent of the, the?
Yes.
Yes.
It's sixty-six square feet and the facade's eight hundred, so it's.
Is it the, of the front? It's at the front of the building, fifteen percent of?
Yeah, and it's less than, it's, it's around ten percent, in fact, it's less than ten percent.
Of the frontage. Oh.
So it's a finding, it's not a special permit, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Don't even, yeah, there you go.
I won't. Patty's making faces.
Yeah, no, whatever.
No, it is.
I'm, I'm just thinking.
Sorry.
So.
I wish, yeah.
Do they have an exist- they have an existing special permit, right, for all of this, because it was non-conforming to begin with?
Not necessarily.
It's never awarded.
No, pre-existing.
It was never.
It's never awarded, it's just pre- it's an existing non-conforming building.
I think we need a special permit. That's just my opinion, I think if we put all this.
If you find that you don't need a variance, then when it comes next is usually the special permit.
You can come down, down, or you can go down to a finding.
But the, but the alterations in the signage are two different issues. The alterations are per John.
So we can make that a finding, but then the, the signage.
And.
You don't, they don't need a.
We don't need a special permit, cause it's conforming.
Special permit, it's a complete conditions on.
Cause they're conforming. No, we, they're, they're conforming.
What about the site, and the part?
They can get a permit for that signage, as determined by this board, they can get a permit without anything. So, a finding would just at least clarify it for John.
The only thing is, is if we do a finding, then we just, we didn't need any other colors, cause they can do whatever they want. If we have a special permit, we condition that it's based on these plans.
That, those colors, to me, were, were part of the alterations.
Are part of the plans. Okay.
As far as I'm concerned.
I feel like it gets a little willy-nilly, I'd feel more comfortable with a special permit.
I don't, I can't, per.
You can just find that a special permit is required instead of a variance, and then do, then do special permit.
Yep, which we already done.
And then we can go through those four.
Because you gotta read one sixty-five seventy-nine, that it's not more detrimental.
Oh.
And you can't do that with.
Right. With a finding.
Cause it's not one sixty-five, that's under special permit signage. That's all I, I was thinking of, but it's, if Paul thinks it's.
Not required signage.
No, I, I.
I, I don't know, the specifics.
What are we granting the special permit for?
So, what's the harm, what's the harm in saying it's a special permit, what's the downside?
It, well, they don't have a par- a special permit to begin with, because.
Special permit for three signs where one is.
No, special permit in general. I mean, if they don't have one to begin with, shouldn't they have gotten one whenever that was built, technically? They should have. Because it's no, I mean, if someone comes in and they're, they wanna build a porch and they're in a non-conforming place, it's the same sort of thing, we give them a special permit to do it. Still a non-conforming.
No, no, sorry, no, you're changing the footprint, that's a whole different scenario.
I'm just.
Okay, they're staying within the same footprint.
Saying it's an uncovered porch.
They're reducing, they're reducing a non-conformity with the size of the awning versus what's there. The signage, you know, I mean, we can split nickels, you know, split hairs, and if you, you know, if you feel, feel more comfortable, we could change that to a special permit. But from a comfort level, I'm comfor- comfortable enough leaving it as a finding.
Well, like, what John says in here, okay, so, the proposal will requ- require a finding from the ZBA that the proposed alterations are not more detrimental than the existing conditions.
Correct, done.
So that's what you find. Then, he says additional signage would require a variance, we did it as variance slash pes- special permit, and so you found, if you're finding that a variance is not required, that's part of the finding.
But we could find that.
Then you do special permit, and then you can, can put your conditions for the site plan review, the colors, or whatever you.
We can find that, we, we felt that a variance or, or special permit was not needed. That was our, that's our finding as a board.
Right. Because they don't, their signs are, because we've determined that those two, you know, John is suggesting that those are signs, and we can understand why he thinks that. But that's why it comes to the board, and the board determines that that, those additional architectural elements are not signs, they're just.
So if John, I just wish John were here.
No, you don't.
Well, I do, because these are the types of things that make me nervous. I don't wanna do something that.
Well, the only thing that can happen is someone will appeal it, and if it doesn't hold up, then, then we'd start over.
But when you read.
That's the only, that's the.
There's no one in op- there's no one in opposition.
Yeah.
Are they still required to go before the planning board, and it's not part of our finding at all?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, because of the alterations.
Yeah, true.
But it has nothing to do with us, because we're not issuing a special permit, so we can't condition it.
That's right, has nothing to do with that, that the alterations have to do that, right?
But you still need to do it.
Okay, but there's no waiting period involved with the planning board, you go before the p- planning board.
You gotta get on the plan, you gotta file, I would do that immediately.
Okay.
Because you could be pushed out. Chaplain Hills is gone, um, but.
They have to go before the planning board because of the, uh, alterations to the facade?
They have.
Yes.
Big subdivision going on, and you can be pushed out a couple months.
Okay, so we better get that.
If you don't have and have.
I guess that doesn't change whether we do a finding or a special permit, right, pardon me?
Planning board is much slower than here.
Okay, but there, i- if we're approved by the planning board, there's not a waiting period after that, this is the board of appeals, so.
Modifying an existing.
This is a twenty, decision is a twenty day appeal period.
I know, but this is, alright.
It's modifying.
Right.
I'm not sure with site plan review, what it is.
I mean, not.
I think there's, it's not a publicly advertised.
Site plan review?
Yeah, is it, oh, it is.
Yeah.
I don't know why they need site plan review.
Public hearing, everything. I didn't think they did, but.
Who do I talk to about that?
His name is Howard.
What specifically caused this exterior alteration?
But we're, we're actually, we're, we're reducing, we're not even modifying, well, we're modifying, but we're reducing.
It's an exterior alteration.
Expansion or modification.
It's a modification.
Let me write it down.
Okay.
You're modifying it, you're changing the signage. Somebody else read it.
No.
I just want.
No, I, I'm kidding.
You modify an existing non-conformity, you need a special permit. We need a special permit.
Modify an existing non-conforming, which would be the signage. Currently, have we even determined that that's non-conforming, their signage bef- from before?
Well, they have multiple signs.
I know, but you're not, it's just all about the square footage, isn't it?
Right. You're only supposed to have one. No, you're supposed to only have one.
Oh.
And the square footage is also a requirement, but it's, it's one and only for three.
Yeah.
And. You do have to find that the, the property is non-com, well, the property is non-conforming in both area and frontage. That's the first part of John's denial. You gotta get that, you know, the first part of John's denial is it's an undersized lot. So it's non-conforming and.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
It's non-conforming in both area and frontage, so that should be part of the finding. The finding part.
Well, doesn't he say the subject property, property is non-conforming in both area and frontage?
He's already determined that, we don't even have to respond to that.
The proposed alterations are not more than.
Yeah, it's just hanging out, the proposal that they've given us.
Sorry. I'm taking a while.
And, um, so let's go ahead, let's make this a special permit, if you want, go ahead and call it a, a modification to an existing non-conforming. To, what, as, as far as.
But I think, but I think keep in there that the, you've, the board found that a variance is not required.
I would like also to like to move that a variance is not required, um.
Yeah, she will. Yeah.
For the signage as a special permit requires a modification of an existing non-conformity, does that make sense?
Requires what, say again?
Um. That a variance is not required for the signage, um. However, a special permit is.
Special permit is required for the modification.
But we're saying that we gotta say that we also like to move that a variance is not required for the signage, period.
Yeah, that. That happens right off the bat.
Right, but, um, however. However, a special permit.
And does that happen?
Is required.
How often do they meet?
For the modification of the existing non-conforming use.
Patty, when is the next meeting of the planning board's site review?
Of the modification.
Planning board?
Of the existing.
I could probably look it up, but let's.
Okay.
Well, you gotta file with them, it could be, you won't get in the next meeting. I think the meeting next.
So we're granting a, 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 a use of special.
No, it's not a use.
Well. Yeah, it is, it's, uh, when you have signage like that, and it's existing not.
Well, we call it, it's, is, is signage a use?
Well, that would be the non-conformity.
I just think it's, it's, it's not, for the modification, um, of the signage as it is existing, not, it is currently non-non-conforming, I think we call it that, just call it non-conforming, um, for the modification of the signage.
Okay, alright.
As it exists. It is non-conforming. Conforming. Then we can say the proposed signage is conforming.
Aren't we aggrieved, and therefore going?
We have determined.
Yes. But we're not going to this.
Determined.
And not triggers this, I'm like that, if we talk to the board.
The proposed signage is conforming.
Fuck, why is that a trigger?
As the archi- as the architectural features bar and restaurant are not considered signage by the board.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore not considered in the signage calculation.
Mm-hmm.
And then we don't, we're gonna leave awning as the finding, finding?
Yeah, I just thought we should propose alterations, including.
Including the awning?
Yes, yeah.
That's it, okay, so. Do you want me to read it before I motion it?
No, go ahead, you can motion it, yeah, you can.
Or just. Okay, and if we need to make a friendly amendment, we can.
This is gonna be good, Patty.
It's.
Well, as long as it's written down, I'm good.
Oh, and then we have to say, we have to say the, uh. The A through D.
One seventy, you can just say one seventy-nine, A through D.
One sixty-five dash seventy-nine, A through D. Per, right, just per?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, Patty, I don't know if it's gonna be pretty. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to find that the proposed alterations, including the proposed awning at seventeen nine, through nineteen West Main Street are not more detrimental than the existing conditions. I would also like to move that a variance is not required for the signage. Oh, where did I go? As.
New sign, new signage is in.
As their existing signage. Wait a minute. Variants are not required for the signage, however, did you, I'm sorry, I would also like to move that a variance is not required for the signage, period. However, a special permit is required for the, for the modification of the signage as it exists, it is non-conforming. Alright?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want me to read it again?
However, I'm sorry, however, a special permit is required.
For the modification of the signage as it, it, as it exists, it is non-conforming. And feel free to tweak that if you need to.
Yep.
We have determined the proposed signage is conforming. The architectural features bar and restaurant are not considered signage by this board, and therefore the square footage are not in, are not included in the signage calculation. Um.
Second.
We feel, uh, how do I add the conditions?
Um, are you still on finding? Are you doing special permit?
No, we're onto the special permit. However, a special permit is required for the mo- modification.
You need a second for us for finding.
Yeah, let's, we gotta.
Oh.
It's alright, can do it right now, someone like the second.
Second.
Alright, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, hold on a second. Did we get everything?
We can add the details afterwards, no problem.
Um, can you just, I'm sorry, can you just, um, where it says the proposed signage is conforming, comma, the architect.
No, the proposed signage is conforming, period.
Period.
The architectural features, bar and restaurant.
In quotations.
Are not considered signage by this board. And therefore the square footages are not included in the signage calculation.
Sorry, thank you.
And then the board, um. Feels that we have met all the requirements of one sixty-five through seventy-nine.
That's gonna go onto special permit.
Right.
Which we're on.
Oh.
Yeah, we're on a special permit now. When it comes to the signage, so we've, we've voted on the finding.
Okay.
For the alteration.
Do we need to vote on the finding that we believe that it's not a variance?
We do.
Okay, so we should, I, that's bulked together right now, the way I've written it, but we can.
Well, you put it in there, also a variance is not required for the signage.
Right.
That's the finding, and you, so you voted on that, so now you're doing special permit.
Okay.
Another motion.
We haven't voted on the, the fact that the variance is not, we've only voted on the finding that the alterations are not more detrimental.
Okay, can I read what I have?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Gina DeCattis, to find that the zoning board of appeals finds that the proposed alterations, including the awning at seventeen dash nineteen West Main Street, are not more detrimental than the existing conditions, period.
That's it, we, we just voted on that, that's a finding.
Okay, I still had, I, then I had also a variance is not required for the signage.
Okay, so then.
Oh, yeah, you can put that as part of the finding.
Yeah.
And then, how, however, a special permit, now we're onto the special permit.
Okay, so however is not part of that motion, oh.
Well, cause the variance is not required, it's just a finding.
Okay, so after, also variance not required for the finding, now I'm doing special permit, right?
We can just not do however, we can just say a special permit is required.
Okay, so you're not doing a separate motion for special permit?
No, we are.
Okay.
We are, but we should, we haven't actually.
I was just reading everything together.
Oh, okay, okay, so special permit starts with however.
But change it to just a special permit is required.
Yeah.
Just to be safe, we should vote on the fact that a variance is not required, just, even though she doesn't have to have it in there, so, if someone like to make a motion.
Just in case we're not.
I'd like to make a motion that a variance is not required for seventeen dash nineteen West Main Street for the.
S- uh, signage.
Signage.
Second.
Um.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You bulked it, we didn't vote on it. When we first voted, we only voted on the first part.
Cause I got you and Dave making the motion.
But that was only for the first part, that wasn't for the variance.
We were gonna, we.
And then you put it in, but, so we had to vote on it to make sure that you put it in.
Okay, so what Sharon just made the motion for is for the variance not required.
That's correct.
Only cause you added it to the first part, and we hadn't technically voted.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
We've only been doing this for fourteen years.
Not me.
Yeah, I know. Me either.
For you.
No, I'm standing really green.
Okay.
And then a special permit is required for the modification of the signage, um.
Should that read, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to grant a special permit.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
You don't speak often, but when you do, boy, you're spot on.
To grant a special permit. Um.
To.
To modify the existing non-conforming signage, how's that, that's even better.
Modify the.
To modify the existing
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Brilliant.
Non-conforming signage, I like that better.
Jeff would approve.
Jeff's gonna look at these and like shake his head.
Oh, he's not here.
Um.
Existing non-conforming signage.
We have determined.
Yep.
The proposed signage is conforming. Period. The architectural features bar and restaurant, you have all that, right?
Bar and restaurant are not considered.
Signage.
Signage by the board, therefore, the square footage is.[1669.78]